My headphones in, so.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, we are live on YouTube.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Revere School Committee's Committee of the Whole Meeting. Roll call the members.
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Here.
Mr. Diambrosio?
Mr. Ferranti?
Here.
Ms. Gravelis?
Here.
Mr. Sonella?
Here.
Ms. Thay?
Here.
Mayor Rigo?
Here.
We'll start tonight's meeting with the consent calendar.
Move to move for the approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
But moved. We'll move to the warrants. Mr. Franti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matt, I just have really a few questions. On number 18, where it says unemployment, is that for the month of January or December? What is that a month's payment or is that multiple? He's muted.
You're on mute, Matt.
Busy house. It would be the month of November, actually. By the time the reports, the unemployment happens, the report gets compiled by them, comes to us, gets reviewed by us and the city, and the payment is made. It's about a six-week delay on that. So that's a monthly charge for the month of November that got paid in the month of January.
Okay. On page three, number 99, Sport Decals Inc. T-shirts, I'm just wondering who the T-shirts were for.
That would have been the Rumney Marsh, not the Rumney Marsh, the Susan B. Anthony that made the purchase. So Joanne Willlet would have been purchasing those. P O 5681. I can pull down exactly who she was providing the shirts for. It would not be a typical shirt purchase of custodians or cafeteria staff. It would have been something to do with the staff or a certain student population at the Susan B.
In my last question on page seven, 241, 243, the national grid bills, is that one month for the electric and gas? Or is that the entire building, all the buildings or just one building?
That is just the high school. And the natural gas is a monthly cost. The electricity is a monthly cost less a rebate that the city receives for some solar solar farm panels. So the actual cost of high school electricity would be more than that. We're only paying the difference between that and the credit that we're receiving.
So the gas and electric for one month for the high school is $40,000.
Oh, sure. Yeah. And the high school is probably a little bit, the electricity probably a little bit higher, but has a credit applied to it. Don't forget that electricity.
So it really.
The electricity would be a more steady amount during the year. The natural gas will surge in the colder months.
Yeah, I get it.
Drop off in the warmer months.
So it really makes very little difference if we have people in the building or not then.
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna, it'll be very interesting when I get through the 12 months for this year to see if there's a difference. But, for example, the buildings are not running at 50 degrees. So in the in the off-season, they're still being heated in something, something similar to that. Electricity is where we'll see a little bit of a decrease. But we'll plot it over the year once we have a whole year under our belt.
All right, thank you. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Franti. Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes, just had a question on line item 645 and 646 for 1,400 and 700 for the rest of justice training. And I am just wondering if that is district-wide or was it certain schools?
Answer that if that. So that's a district-wide professional development being provided by the Suffolk University. They are the institution specializing in those type of things. So that's going to be for central office, principals, assistant principals, directors.
And has that training been started or is it upcoming?
So the training will take place on the 24th of this month and 25th, and then March 3rd and March 4th.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia.
You're welcome.
Ms. Thay?
Thank you. I just had an observation, not really a question, although I did have a question on the restorative justice. And I'm so glad to see that that's it because that's something that will make a difference in our kids' lives and in the quality and atmosphere of the high school for years to come. But I did think this is such an unusual thing that we are spending on page 15, number 566, almost $48,000 on hand sanitizer. And and another almost $100,000 on page 17 on the Austin Air Systems. Both a sign of the times. And thank heavens that we have the money that we can do that, that we can both make the school safe from a physical point of view for our kids and safe in the general sense, in the general point of view, with a restorative justice training. Thank you for making sure that these things are taken care of. That's it.
Well, thank you, Ms. Thay. Mrs. Rizzo, did you have another comment or? Okay, we'll move on to financial reports. Any members?
So we just provided you with a note that a half a million dollar state grant came through for coronavirus prevention. So it'll come directly to us. No further appropriation needed to spend it. It'll come in two chunks. The first one should be here any minute. And there's a paragraph in there that shows the type of things that we would be investing in. And it's another one of these grants with a timeframe that's a little bit shorter than usual. So just wanted you to be aware that that's a fourth source of coronavirus fund. This one's coming directly from the state.
If I could just speak to that one for a moment, as Matt mentioned, this is a half million dollars of unexpected funding. And it has to be spent by this June, so it's got a very tight window. And what we would like to do is actually use a chunk of that money to begin our hiring process earlier than we typically would. Normally, we're waiting for the governor's budget to come out and then for that to go through its process in the House and the Senate before we have a realistic sense of how much money we're going to have to spend in the next fiscal year. This year, we have more reason to be optimistic about what our financial status is going to be for FY '22. And so rather than wait until, you know, April, May, and June, when everybody's going to be hiring and looking for positions, we would like to use that $500,000 to start that hiring process now. And really keeping in mind that we are hiring positions for next school year. Based on the feedback that we got from the community and teachers and parents in the school committee, all those positions that we were not able to fill this year, such as English learner teachers, you know, all of those other positions that we had from our Student Opportunity Act funding, which we're going to have this year. But use this unexpected amount of money to get those folks on board now. And then knowing that we're going to have that money in the budget for FY '22. But really be able to capitalize on the opportunity to get those staff members signed now instead of waiting till we are competing with other districts. And then also having increased staff available to help with our reopening in order to get kids back into the classroom in a hybrid model sooner than later.
Great. Sounds like a good idea.
Mr. Franti?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Diane, is there anybody in particular we're looking to hire or is it just hiring more general teachers?
No, there's a variety of positions that we had talked about that we weren't able to fill. The ones we would want to prioritize right now are a couple of reading specialists and math interventionists that some of the schools had asked for. We also need to increase our number of English learner teachers and a number of social workers. Those would be our main priorities right now. We can look at how much, we really need to map out how much that's going to cost us between now and June. It's basically a little less than a 50% salary would be. Because it's, you know, less than half of the year. And really see how many positions that we have. We have some other positions that we haven't filled yet, like the health technicians that we want to hire for each of the school nurse offices. But those are budgeted under Essar. And so we'll leave those there and use this more as a get moving on next year kind of implementation strategy.
So if you don't use it all, do you lose it?
We do. So we want to prioritize using this. This is going to be of all of the grants we now have because the Essar grant, even Essar I was extended. And Essar II, we actually still have to do the application for. But that's good until December of 2022. And CVRF funds were extended until December. So we have a while to spend those down. But this one is, as Matt mentioned, a really tight timeframe. It's only till June. So we've got like four months. And so this is going to become a priority to spend down this 500,000 and then work off the other ones.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franti. Mr. Sonella?
Yes, through to the superintendent. Could this money be used for hiring or is it specifically, you know, just, you know, has the grant been granted for specifics? Or is it free cash that you can do what you want with it?
It's relatively free. It has to be COVID-related. And so that's why we would look at it as, you know, hiring those particular positions that I mentioned because it really do help, you know, the kids with the social emotional needs, the social workers are going to help with that. The English learner teachers will help us close the gap for our at-risk students. Those are the kinds of positions that we'll prioritize for spending now because they will help us with our COVID recovery.
Okay, but the difference is that's grant money now in the following budget, those will have to be budgeted.
That's right. Yep. And that's why we're going to link those two things and not just be. So for example, we were talking about, you know, we know that next year, we need a math interventionist at the Garfield. It was one of the requested positions that we weren't able to fill. So we would look to hire somebody who has the right licensure to be a math interventionist at the Garfield next year. But this year, the rest of this year, they might actually serve to reduce class size so that we can get more kids into our hybrid model. Does that make sense? So we're kind of looking at, we're taking the two so that right now it's helping us with our COVID recovery. And then next year, it would be part of the regular budget as one of those positions that we, to date, have not been able to fill.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sonella. Any other members? Before we move on, I just want to welcome Mr. Diambrosio. Thanks for coming on. We'll move on to personnel items. Thank you, Matt. Good to go. Dr. Kelly, do you want to talk through the personnel items?
A couple more of our veteran teachers have officially submitted their retirement letters. So that's probably the key piece here that the committee will be interested in. I don't know if there's anything else that folks had a question about.
Yeah, Mrs. Rizzo?
No, this family liaisons have been hired. Have we filled all those positions? Are we still, do we still have some open positions?
They are all filled at this time. There was one that we had originally hired who didn't, didn't stay with us. And so that one is now being replaced with this new hire that you see on today's agenda.
Any other members? Okay, we'll move on to school committee protocols.
Well, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Thay?
I did, as I was requested, did an English teacher looking at them and use the previous ones. But there is, Mrs. Rizzo picked up something that had been on there and I quite agree. So that on the protocols, on number four and number nine, it says chair. I did not change that, although I'm not in agreement with it. I didn't change it because I didn't feel that it was right for me to make changes unilaterally from the iteration of the document that I had, that I was working from. So not only have mayors always had a thousand things to do, but certainly under these circumstances today, the mayor does. So I would recommend that on four, that we move that to vice chair. And if, Mr. Mayor, if you thought it wasn't an undue burden, which I happen to think so because I'm trying to save your soul here. I think that vice chair, asking the vice chair or the superintendent makes a lot more sense than asking the mayor with all of the things you have to do. So I would move that. And if anyone wants to make a substitute motion, you know, that's fine, but that we change that to vice chair.
And I, after Carol had sent this to Robyn, I sent it out to everyone to look at. And I highlighted because when she sent it, it both had chairs. And vice chair is usually in the mayor's absent is takes over. So that's why I figured vice chair, chair. But at this point, there words to me, and I just want to get this passed at our next meeting so that we can go on and move on from here. But I didn't hear back from anyone if they had any suggestions or if they wanted something added to it. So the only other thing I'm asking is, in the past, the date has been on top, such as in the protocols, it says 2020, 2021. If that could be deleted and as we do with our policies, any amendments and revisions are put down at the bottom with the date.
Well, I would add that to my motion.
Carol, I would think this is a discussion and the vote would be on the floor.
I think either way, but let's, the only reason I put it in a motion is let's decide.
Okay, so then we'll take it off the, because it's on the school committee meeting as a motion.
Okay. So my motion is to change the number four and nine is to change the chair to vice chair. Mr. Mayor, if you want to weigh in on that, that's, I'd be happy to hear that. And change the date to the bottom as we do with all policies.
Ms. Thay, I'll just weigh in and say I'm fine with the vice chair.
I thought you would be.
And I will second that motion that Carol made.
Okay. And just as a point of information, that is on the calendar as a motion for your regular meetings.
Yes, right.
And, you know, like we discussed last month when I was asking to get our policies online, these are two that we started in 2012 that never got updated in our policy book. So it's just an example of what we need to kind of keep track of.
But these are not policies.
They're in our handbook.
Like it's part of the manual, right?
It's in our policy under governing body, yes.
Oh, okay. So should there be policy number references on here?
Yes, but I was going to take them off the ones we have there. I just didn't, this was Carol's version, so I didn't. So what I'll do is I'll get that so that Robin can correct it.
Perfect.
And then she can make changes as Carol proposed.
Okay. And if you have those other ones, Stacy, I don't know that I got those. The other ones that need to be updated, you have the list?
I haven't had time to go through every single one, but I have at least eight of them at hand, but.
Okay, so we have a, there's a motion on the floor and there was a second. We'll take a roll call.
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yeah.
Mr. Anthony Diambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Ferranti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravelis?
Yes.
Mr. Sonella?
Yes.
Ms. Thay?
Yes.
Mayor Rigo?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to overarching goals.
Mr. Mayor, I also sent this out to anyone with the beautiful grammar and Ms. Thay's interpretation, which looks so much nicer. And asked if anyone had any questions or amendments, if they could let us know prior to this meeting so that we could move on. Does anyone have any?
Any members?
So we'll ask for this to be amended on the floor also, as is.
You mean adopt it, don't you?
No. We've already adopted it in 2012.
Oh, oh, you mean.
You've amended, yeah, you've amended it, yes.
Okay.
All right. We'll move on to the equity audit and focus groups. Dr. Garcia?
Sure. The, the equity audits is in full swing with principals being apprised about the activities that are going to take place. And, you know, all administrators in general. So right now, the principals are scheduling meetings, are asking teachers and, you know, for focus group interviews time, which they already started putting into the, into the calendar. And the principals themselves and other stakeholders will be interviewed. As a matter of fact, this morning, I received an email from Mass Insight with some requests for school committee members. There are obviously six members. They want to interview, you know, all school committee members into two cohorts. First cohort would have obviously three people, and other three people and the mayor will be interviewed separately. So those dates are Thursday, March, they're proposing the following dates. Thursday, March 4th, between 9:00 a.m. and 12:30 p.m. or 2:30 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. I can email it, I can email these dates and times for you. So it's basically about between 45 to one hour interview. They're also proposing another date, which is Friday, March 5th, between 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. So so those are the dates they want us to confirm. You know, you don't have to give me an answer now. I can certainly email you, but we are moving on a very aggressive schedule. We have a lot of unknowns coming down the pipe. And we want this process really to be conducted, executed with maximum precision. And, you know, it's an exciting time because, you know, the questioners have been developed. They, they have checked. Actually, they sent it to the group of, to Dr. Kelly and as a team, Dr. Mukaba, Dr. Galuch, we all sit down around, we went over those questions to make sure that they are educationally sound and they are purposeful and they really will pay off. So we did a review, we submitted to them. So right now, basically, we're going through, you know, through scheduling people for interviews. And I have committee members that I have to contact. We have day, you know, possible days and times for them. I have community, you know, partners also that are involved in this process. It's really, you know, it's, it's moving forward. We anticipate that problem in June, we'll have this process completed with the findings and recommendations to be made to our school department and to our school community. So that's where we are in the process.
You'll follow up with them with an email tomorrow?
I will follow, yes, I will follow up with an email tomorrow.
And then, I don't know how we can figure out like who's going to be in what group or how, if the committee has any thoughts on that.
That's a, that's a decision I will, you know, leave, I'll leave that up to you, but it's, they cannot interview everyone at the same time. Yeah, I'll make you guys make a decision on that.
Well, a lot will have to do with people's availability for those times. So maybe three can only make one. We can all check our calendars and get all that together.
Sure.
I already responded to that. Anytime March 5th will work for me. So whatever time that day and whoever else is available is good with me.
I'll send you the calendar and the days and times. That way, you know, you don't need to rush into any decision now. So, but we do need those dates and times because they have other commitments too. So that's all. Yeah, but we'll get it done. Yeah.
Okay.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Garcia.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to additional COVID relief funds.
I think we actually covered that. That's what I wanted to talk about with the 500,000.
Okay, we'll move on to outdated Chromebooks.
So this one in, this is a request from Jonathan Farrara. We have a number of Chromebooks around 2,000 that are going to come to what we call their end of life at the end of this year. The older ones from the high school and the middle school one-to-one programs that predate COVID. And what we would like to do is work to give these to students to keep so that they can have their own Chromebook. That they wouldn't be worried about breaking or damaging and having to pay us back if, if such an event occurred. Rather than just get rid of them. If we get rid of them, it would be like totally not worth it. Like we do do an old technology trade-in program. But it's pennies on the dollar and really not something that would make a significant change to the school department, but could make a significant change for a student.
Well, I think it's a great idea to give it to the students.
Mr. Franti and then Ms. Gravelisi.
Diane, how many books are we actually talking about?
It's about 2,000 that will reach the end of life this year.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Gravelisi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Diane, will you identify the students of greatest needs first? How will that process go? You'll be able to identify that.
We'll work with principals and the, and the teams at each school to identify which kids need the most.
That's great.
And we have some information, obviously, like the information Dr. Garcia collected with Jamie Flynn as we've gone through COVID, identifying, you know, which families were in significant need and had multiple kids that had no device. And all of that information that we have will be consulted first.
That's a great idea.
Good. Great.
Excellent. Any other members? Okay, we'll now move on to school building volunteer. Joseph Lewin.
Just before we do, Mr. Mayor, do we need a motion on that to?
Oh, you might actually, because it's school department goods that you'd have to vote to give away.
Yeah, but you'd have to declare them surplus. So I think a letter from the superintendent or whomever declaring them surplus and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, okay. I can tell Jonathan that we'll plan with this in mind. And when they actually become surplus at the end of the school year, then we'll. And when they actually become surplus at the end of the school year, then we'll look for your permission to give them out then.
Okay, great.
And so we'll move on to school building volunteer.
Good. So this is kind of a. Happy circumstance. You all should have gotten a resume from Robyn this morning from Joseph Lewin. Who reached out to us earlier in the fall. He's a retired former chief of staff at Harvard University. And prior to that was the director of facilities for the city of Boston. I happen to know a couple of people who worked with him at that time in the facilities department in Boston and all of them. Raved about what an incredibly great person Joe is and. How knowledgeable he is, how easygoing he is and how great he is to work with. But Joe had reached out to say that he was retired. And in recent years had been volunteering his time. With different schools and charter schools and others that were doing new buildings, kind of being an extra set of eyes. Kind of watching the books and watching the schedules and making sure the right eyes are dotted and the Ts are crossed. And he was interested in doing that for us with the new high school building. So Richie and Carl and I had a preliminary meeting with him to kind of meet him. And really kind of feel him out and see whether we thought that he'd be helpful to us. And Carl was really appreciative and thought that he'd be a great asset. Joe would not be directing us in any way. We would not necessarily follow any guidance he gives us. But he would do things like attend school building committee meetings and monitor the work. Of different companies that we're working for, the 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 design firm, the OPM firm. You know, all of those different groups that are eventually going to be involved in this job and make it very complicated. And kind of be an extra set of eyes and ears for Carl. And be able to say to Carl, I think that you should ask them more deeply about this or. You know, we've seen the same issue on the agenda for three meetings in a row. Someone needs to take ownership of that. We need to push them to take ownership of that. We need to resolve it. And, you know, just kind of do things like that. And so I told Joe that I would share his resume with all of you. And see if the committee thought that this was a good idea to bring Joe on board. And if you do, then our next step would be to introduce him to the school building committee. And let him, you know, meet with that team and kind of explain what his role is going to be and. And and how he's going to work with us. And the best part of it is if it doesn't work out, we just say goodbye. It's completely voluntary.
Well, if I may.
Ms. Ty, go ahead.
The, his resume was absolutely outstanding, not only for his education, but for everything. And not only for the work, the life work he's done, but the volunteer work that he has done. And I think we are so lucky to have somebody like that. My only question was, well, have we met him and do we have a sense of what he's like, you know, to work with personally? And when you tell me that Cal, that you folks were all impressed by him, I say, wow. That we, we're lucky to have this guy. So let's get him on board.
Mrs. Sinella.
Mr. Chairman, through the superintendent, I concur with Carol Ty. I mean. I'd hire this guy. I mean. I mean, everything from the Alston interchange, Harvard, everything else, but usually when people volunteer. It's either the principal, in this instance, it would be you. I'm just curious as to. Why it's brought before us. I mean, I'm not objecting to it. This is out of, it's not part of protocol.
Well, I think having this position is not a typical kind of thing. And I, you know, I wanted to make sure the school committee was on board with it and. You know.
No, I, it was just, it was just, you know, back in, you know, people volunteered to help with math and everything else. Because there's hundreds who people volunteer. But I mean, that's a resume, that's a resume. Very good. No. And I think that having sat through the five schools that we built. I think this would be the right guy in the right place at the right time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Sinella. Mr. Ferranti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Diane, would he just be at the high school or would he go to all the schools?
This would just be for the new high school building project. Yep.
Hey, anybody that helps us, Price is Right, good for us.
Absolutely, Mr. Ferranti.
There you go.
All hands on deck. Any other members?
Well, shall we agree to give the superintendent permission? To enlist the services of Mr. Joseph Lewin?
I'm fine with it.
I'm, I'm okay with it. I just, I, it sounded like Dr. Kelly wanted to also run it by the school building committee.
Yes.
So, yeah, do you want to authorize her to introduce Mr. Lewin to the, to the school building authority potentially?
Sure.
Why would you, Mrs. Rizzo?
I think it's important for the school building committee to. Have a say in it, seeing that. A lot of things he'll be doing is working with them hand in hand. So as much as I think we should have a say in it, I. I would like to see what they have to say. I'm sure they'll be comfortable with it.
Well, I think she should just go to the next step in the process.
Introduce the building committee. Introduce the building committee, let them see what they say and then go from there.
Okay, so, so there's a motion on the floor for the school committee to. Give authorization for the superintendent to introduce Mr. Lewin to the school building authority, the school building committee.
I'll second, second.
Okay, all in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Right. I have just a couple of other quick updates that I wanted to share. One was that the. The commissioner has denied Prospect Hills Chatter's request for an expansion. So. I just want to make sure you knew that. We have the, I don't know if you heard about, the state is doing a. High school senior internship program. It's a really exciting program. Internships in education is for kids who think that maybe they might be interested in being a teacher someday. And it's part of the Influence 100 program to increase the diversity in the teaching ranks in the state of Massachusetts. But the, you know, this is kind of like a confluence of things coming together. Because of COVID, they're actually going to let kids work in their own districts, doing internships with elementary school teachers. So that the high school kids can help with reading breakout rooms and math tutoring and that kind of a thing. But the kids are going to get paid for it, $13.50 an hour. And they anticipate that the kids who participate will average about 100 hours over the course of the second semester. And between Revia High School and Seacoast, we're going to have over 30 kids involved in the program. So those kids will be able to earn the money that they typically go away from their education to a part-time job. Instead, they'll be able to do it as part of their education. And doing this work will replace in one of their elective classes. So they'll still get their credit. They'll get high school credit for doing the work. And so Diana Finn at the high school has been coordinating this program for us. And she's working with principals doing the assignments of students to elementary teachers. And that will be starting up shortly. So we're really excited about that.
Yeah, great.
And then the last thing, we are working with the Department of Education, as you all know. Teachers were moved down the, down in the priority list for vaccine, but the state, the Department of Education is working with. The Veterans Administration, who has their own vaccination program through the federal government that has different guidelines, the state guidelines. And they are actually working to allow teachers who are veterans to become vaccinated sooner than later. And so I just wanted to mention that here. It's actually not just for teachers. It's for all K-12 employees who are veterans. So just for the folks at home, custodians, secretaries, cafeteria workers, most of. Those people who work for the school department are Revia residents. And so just to let people know that that's an opportunity, I did send an email to all staff. Inviting anybody who wanted to participate in that program to let me know and. We have to let the state know by Friday. So I'm going to be sending a reminder. To people on Thursday to sign up for that if they're interested. And I think that is it.
Okay, any members have any, anything else? Seeing none, will, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Did we want, did you?
Mr. Chairman, can we?
Do we want to executive?
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I thought there was a concern about adjourning to executive session.
Yeah.
Yeah, motion. To adjourn to executive session on behalf of negotiations, discussions. Is that even correct?
Yeah.
Second.
And not coming back into. Open session.
Until our regular.
Until six.
Until our regular meeting at six.
There's a separate meeting.
Right. But that's our regularly scheduled meeting, just in case anyone who is listening thinks that.
We're not coming back.
Motion to go into executive session and there's a second. We'll take a roll call.
Yep.
Lawrence, oh, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Mrs. Bronson Rizzo.
Yep.
Mr. Di Ambrosio.
Yes.
Mr. Ferranti.
Yes.
Ms. Gravellis.
Yes.
Mr. Sinella.
Yes.
Ms. Ty.
Yes.
Mayor Orego.
Yes.
Okay.